All at one station, ninety-one point one FM, the boss.
I'm Bruce Tough, principal of the Tough Law Firm. We are a full-service law firm serving the greater Woodlands area and the greater Houston area. Contact us at two eight one six eight one oh eight oh eight. We're tough for you.
Welcome to The Legal Fix, a new age radio show brought to you by The Tough Law Firm. We're the toughest law firm in town with the toughest lawyers around answering your toughest legal questions.
Hey, welcome to The Legal Fix, a new age radio show brought to you by The Tough Law Firm where we answer your toughest legal questions. Call our hotline at nine three six nine hundred two three eight one. I am your host, Bruce Tough, Big Deal, along with Boy Wonder, Brandon Riley, and super lawyer GI Jerome Jeremy Hall. Hey, baby, how are you?
Excellent. Golden Boy. My nicknames are stacking up.
I know. We got.
We're gonna need a longer show.
Yeah. How many nicknames do we have for Boy Wonder?
One.
BW.
The other one.
Y'all used to call him Wonder Boy.
Dubs. We call him the Dubs now. We're going down. We're going down and down. So we got GI Jerome, GI Jerome, Jeremy Hall, Super Lawyer. What is our other nickname?
Government issued.
Golden Boy.
Government issued Golden Boy.
And then James Bond.
Oh, yeah. He's rocking the golden hair. Look at him. Yeah. We did a whole segment last time on James Bond and how he looked like Daniel Craig.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, I've got it. Actually, I've got a great idea for the new James Bond. I've got a pitch to Ryan Reynolds and Rob McElhenney. I want two James Bonds. Ryan Reynolds can be James Bond and Rob McElhenney can be his brother Jim Bond.
Yes.
Agent double oh seven and agent double oh six point nine. You round up? What do you have?
Double oh seven.
Two double oh sevens, two James Bonds. Come on, guys.
Good job. Good job.
That's actually a pretty good idea.
Okay.
Hey, we have a special guest today and we're going to discuss local politics of city council. That's exactly what Mayor Pro Tem Raymond McDonald asked me not to do.
Conroe.
We do the opposite of everything. Yes, we do everything, the opposite of everything our guests ask us. Welcome, Mayor Pro Tem. How are you? Good. Raymond, yeah. I'm so glad you're here with us. So we don't get many guests from Conroe. I don't know why.
Well, they say that that river cuts through clay and it cuts through relationships.
Yes, I've heard that. I've heard that.
But it won't. It doesn't meet. So there you go.
We had Nelda Blair representing Conroe. She represented well.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Conroe did. Conroe's both Woodlands, Conroe. She's a Conroe girl.
She is. She was the Conroe Tiger mascot. She was. She was.
We forgot to troll her about that. We'll have to have her back on.
Raymond knows so much about. Are you related to Nelda?
She's my cousin.
You are. So would it be your mother's daughter?
It'd be my stepfather's actual sister. And that's it. I came into the family when I was five and I was, we were a bunch of cousins and Nelda was the oldest. And I remember walking in the house and, you know, you're five years old, wondering, hey, is anyone here going to kill me or something? And she came over and was very kind and smiled and then told us exactly what to do and we did it.
Was she wearing red that day?
You know, she was. She had to be. It was Christmas time.
Nelda Luce. Nelda. So you're in the Luce family?
Yeah.
Yeah.
My, that's right.
Oh, how cool.
It was the Dover family. The Luces actually married into the Dover family.
So the Dover is the top of the chart then?
Well, my.
I feel like we're naming dog petting.
Well, my aunt Sue married Wimpy Luce and she was a Dover before that. So and that's kind of the way it works.
Wimpy was Nelda's dad.
Yeah.
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 Uncle Wimpy a great man.
Yes, he is. Yes.
He's great.
So tell, I was looking at your bio, Mayor Pro Tem, and you're in government. You're a senior pastor at Vineyard Church in Conroe.
Right.
And also you're a singer for the Christian Blues group. Is that it? So you're.
Is that it?
Wait, wait, no, wait. No, wait. The Honorable Reverend Sleepy Ray and the Mighty Blood. That's the group.
Correctamundo.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh.
That's sweet.
What did I miss? What don't you do?
Well, I have eleven children and seven grandchildren. So.
You're not making, he's not making any of this up, is he?
That's a lot of birthdays.
I've only got seven or eight kids at home. I might have my daughter moving back today. So at home. So my wife and I, we had three children and then we adopted eight more when we moved to Conroe.
What are their ages?
Big heart.
What's the ages?
Right now at home, we run from nineteen to nine.
Oh.
Okay. Man, that's packed in.
So I'm fifty-nine with a nine-year-old. I don't recommend that.
How do you, you're going to be the oldest dad at graduation.
Yeah. Keep the toys to the highest point.
You will be the oldest dad.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. How is it with that many kids? What do you do?
It's horrible.
Yeah.
It's a long shopping list.
This is a good pastor.
They're great kids. Yeah. It's not that. My wife and I, you know, we lament the days, or we remember the days we used, get to travel around the world. When I, as a musician, I used to travel Europe a lot. And so she would come with me. And so we sit back and say, well, we got to do it when we were young. And now you don't, you don't get invited to parties when you get that many kids. So it's like.
No way.
You get them in the car and the events over.
A van. It looks like a painter's van and it's kind of beat up pretty bad now. The kids are, oh, yeah. And the kids are embarrassed for me to pick them up at school, you know?
Wow.
Character building.
So you're doing things opposites. So instead of having all the kids as a young man, you're having them at a later age. And you've done, you got all your yah yahs out at an early age, right? So there, yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly.
He still plays in a band, though.
Yeah, but you're still in the band.
Yeah, we played last night at the Pacific Yard House. I write a lot of Christmas music too. That's like Texas gospel blues Christmas music. So we did that show last night.
Where can we find that?
That music you won't find, but you can find most of it because I haven't done the album yet. And don't get people started because they beat me over the head every year. When are you going to do the album?
That's what I wanted to know.
We have, we have a studio in the church. My brother's a great producer. So I don't know why we haven't done it. But, but you will find the Sleepy Ray, Honorable Reverend Sleepy Ray stuff. It's all streamed. You can get it on anything there. Some YouTube. My name Raymond McDonald, there's a couple of songs, but there's another guy named Raymond McDonald who was a guitar player from Earl Haggard. So people say, oh, I saw you. You're a country player.
Oh, yeah.
Does he have a cowboy hat as well?
He did. Yeah.
Oh, he does?
Yeah. But he, yeah. So my artist name had to change pretty quick, you know? Because that's the way you do it. You can't have the same name.
Well, you picked a cool one.
Yeah.
You, Christian Blues. So do you write most of the music you do?
Yes, I do. I'm a songwriter. And that's, I mean, when you choose to be a songwriter and a player like that, I was a hot guitar player. So when I got to LA after I left Texas A and M, you know, there's a lot of people trying to get me in those bands and I would. But, you know, you write your own songs. So you, it hurts you in one sense because you don't get to go off and make the money with the other bands because you have to be there keeping your own band going. And, but it was a blessing. I have a lot of friends who were, who became famous and I didn't.
You're famous in Conroe.
Exactly.
Famous for my Christmas song, Christmas in Conroe. So that's, that's my, when a lot of people are downloading right now.
That's a big, that's a big song.
Well, it's a song I wrote about five, six years ago. I wrote it for Mayor Powell when we were first doing all the Christmas stuff. And, you know, I love, I love the song. It really spells out Conroe really well.
It does. And I've heard the song. So you're, you wrote that song?
I'm the Honorable Reverend Sleepy Ray who wrote Christmas in Conroe.
Gonna have our first autograph session.
Did not, I did not. No, this is so cool. Yes, it's very cool. A and M graduate.
I didn't graduate. I left my, my fourth year to go take a year off and study music.
Another success story that Bruce, you don't need to agree.
Eighty-five, the whole economy collapsed. There was nothing to come back to. And so I just stayed. And my friends who were engineers saying, hey, we graduated. We don't have jobs. Stay where you're at.
Stay where you're at.
I regret it though. You know, but I'm still a big, big Dahar Aggie. So.
Well, you can go back. Johnny Manziel went back. Did he, did he finally graduate or not? I don't, I'm not sure.
I think he did, but he went back.
Right.
It's all undercover with Johnny Manziel, you know? Doing things the Manziel way takes five times longer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But he keeps guys like y'all in business.
Oh, definitely.
Oh, yeah. We love him, though.
We love him. I do. I love him very much. He does great. We got a football sign by him in my, in my office. So.
Hey, random fact, one of the most important rule of capture cases in the state of Texas for oil and gas is a Manziel case.
Manziel.
Really? Is it?
Really?
So his grandpa bought up a whole bunch of land from churches and he would buy the mineral rights from them. And then there was a big fight over him, his grandpa pumping oil, or grandma maybe, pumping oil into non-producing wells and then pulling it out.
Oh, yeah.
And so there was an issue with the rule of capture because some of the oil was being pulled out from other people. And they were saying, no, that's mine. But what happens once you pull oil out and put it back into another well, was the question. I don't remember what the ruling was, but.
Oh, no. I'm waiting for the punchline.
Yeah, that's a weird shot. I don't understand that.
But it sounds better with his grandma.
Well, you pull the oil out and then you put it in a non-producing well, then that non-producing well, when you pull it back out, looks like it's a producing well. It's worth more money if you want to sell it.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
Does that apply to water? Because they're doing that with underground storage of water too. Is that the same thing?
Don't give anybody ideas.
Yeah, yeah, I know. You need to look that up.
Conroe City Council is going to put the kibosh on you.
Well, I've been, I've been to the Supreme Court here in Texas dealing with rule of capture for City of Conroe for other things that we went and.
What's going on with that?
Well, we are in a, well, we weren't there for the rule of capture. That was what was going on over there. We are in a lawsuit with S J R A.
Correct.
Unfortunately, those are things that go on. And so we were there mainly for other reasons. But there was, you know, you sit for a long time there watching it. So.
San Jacinto River Authority.
Yes.
Yeah. So City of Conroe against the San Jacinto River Authority. And that's going up to the Supreme Court of Texas?
We're hoping to get that done before it goes to Supreme Court. But we were there on some other issues there that dealing, I'll leave it alone. But, you know, it mainly is dealing with our, our ability to be, have immunity. And so that one there was. So all things swirling around. Yeah.
Cool. Nice.
Sovereign immunity. We talked about that. Yeah. This is a legal show, really. So we talk about legal issues.
Sovereign immunity.
Try to drag it back to legal issues.
But that's why Boy Wonder's here. He does all the.
Manziel, yeah, and right.
For entry level listeners, what is sovereign immunity?
It means that the, that the church, no, no, the kingdom is, is immune from lawsuits. The kingdom is immune from lawsuits from.
The sovereign.
The sovereign, from the parishioners.
The government cannot be sued.
Yeah, the government cannot be sued. I said parishioners. It's not parishioners.
Not in this case. It's not.
It's the peasants.
But we carve out, right, the, now I can't even think of the name of the statute, but we carve out certain sections. So the police officer rear ends you. You have the right to sue the city for your injuries.
Well, for negligence, but you, instead, you deal with all this as a, as a councilman and Mayor Pro Tem because quasi-immunity for the contractual relationships you have with vendors and then dealing with lawsuits against the city as well. And so that one in particular.
And we have those that go down. Yes.
And the idea is we want our government to be able to act freely in our own best interest as citizens, our elected officials that we elected without facing a lawsuit for every decision that a citizen does not like.
Right. And I kind of fumbled that. But really, if you're suing your, your government and they don't have some type of shield or immunity, can sue them out of existence, then you won't have any roads, police, firemen, or any city services. So you got to have some protection.
But part of that in our last legislative session, you would see that there were certain bills put out there and the way that they're going to enforce those is to allow citizens to sue the city if they find them doing these things. And to me, that's concerning when sovereign immunity is being challenged like that because there are lawsuits that can get going with that. You know, you're like, wow, we could go, you know, everything's trying to keep the tax down. And that is concerning.
I bet your budget for lawsuits and litigation is going to go up, up, up.
Well, it didn't pass. Thank God.
Okay.
Okay.
It wasn't, to me, those are the issues.
Oh, that was in Texas? They were actually doing, they've done it in other states?
There was a couple of bills that came out. That was the way they were going to enforce it.
Oh, man.
We need some people in our state legislature that will stand up against things like that.
Hit, hit.
All right.
The Maris Blair.
Yes. Oh, yes, we do. We need the Maris Blair. Right. Vote for Maris. Mayor, would you tell us about your church?
Yeah. It's the Vineyard Church of Conroe. We've been there twenty-one years this January. And it, Vineyard had come out of the West Coast and it had come through music. So it was a lot of praise music. And that's how I got involved with them. I was there as a musician who was playing in the clubs and had a record deal. But I started playing with another guy, a couple of bands there. And they said, hey, we want you to do a, a record that's blues and gospel. And so that's what I did. And, you know, I didn't sell much, about thirty-five thousand units, but I'd travel the world a lot doing that. So I got involved with them and their church planning movement. My call since I was six was to be a pastor. And that's why I didn't graduate A and M because I was trying to burn some bridges. So I'd have to go back and be a pastor. Though I didn't want to be, right?
Yeah.
And so they pulled me back in that way. And I, I found myself coming here and planting a church in Conroe. I would sit in my bedroom there in Yorba Linda, California. I'm, you know, I'm from here. And I would say, where am I going to plant a church? And Conroe kept coming up. And I kept thinking of my Aunt Sue Luce and Nelda and my family there. And said, hey, I'm going to go back there and plant a church. And so my wife and I came back here and planted the church here, bought the church from the Presbyterians who'd been there for many years and bought the house across the street. And, you know, it's a, it's a small church right there in the downtown area, which is what I wanted to do because I spent a lot of time in Switzerland and that's the way they did everything. So.
It's a beautiful, a beautiful church. And Sue Luce, Sue Luce's service was there, wasn't it? Was it?
Yes, it was.
It was, yeah. And you presided. So that was very well.
Well, Nelda presided.
Nelda and her sister. Yes, exactly.
She let him have the mic for a few minutes. Yeah.
But, yeah. And Aunt Sue was the one who was my realtor on that and got everything done for that. It was really cool.
Okay, great, great. Well, what does a Mayor Pro Tem do? What is the, I know that's the official title for you. Is it councilman and Mayor Pro Tem or do you?
It is. You're elected as the councilman to, we're at large. So, you know, place number four. And then the mayor chooses one of the council people to decide who will be his second. You can't say vice mayor because it sounds like you're the mayor of vice. But I'll leave that to the mayor. That is the mayor.
Lieutenant mayor.
Yeah, it is. It's more like lieutenant mayor.
Do you, do you preside over city council at times?
I do. If he's not there, I will preside over city council. I will sign documents. I do all the things that he does when he can. A lot of what I do is I show up and represent the city for him if he cannot be there. And, and all of us council people can do that. But I'll generally get the first call as a Mayor Pro Tem.
Who is the mayor of city, of the City of Conroe?
Jody Chakoski.
And who are the other councilmen?
Todd Yancy.
Right.
Duke Coon, Kurt Maddox, and Marsha Porter.
Do you get along with everybody?
I get along with everybody.
Oh, good for you. We're going to take a quick break and we'll come back with our, our guest, Raymond McDonald. And we're going to put Raymond on the hot seat. So we're going to take this short break. When we return, it's going to be a rapid fire cross-examination where the, where Raymond's going to have to answer all of our toughest questions as fast as he can. And we're going to swear him in. We'll be right back. I'm Bruce Tough, principal of The Tough Law Firm. We are a full-service law firm serving the greater Woodlands area and the greater Houston area. Contact us at two eight one six eight one oh eight oh eight. We're tough for you.
It's time to change. If you like country, we play it. If you like pop, we play it. If you like Latin music. We play it. If you like rock and roll. We play it because no one does fusion music like we do. Ninety-one point one FM, the boss. When's the last time you heard this sound and actually called the police? Yeah, didn't think so.
Welcome back to The Legal Fix, brought to you by The Tough Law Firm where we answer your toughest legal questions. Call our hotline at nine three six nine hundred two three eight one. If you have a legal question for us after the show or sometime during the week, please call us at The Tough Law Firm, two eight one six eight one oh eight oh eight. Okay, today we're discussing local city governments with Mayor Pro Tem Raymond McDonald. And he's here and about ready to go on the hot seat.
The hot seat.
All right. I'm going to, now, Mayor Pro Tem McDonald forgot his glasses. So he obviously hasn't viewed the hot seat or the Legal Fix before. So we're going to be especially hard on him. Okay. All right, Jeremy Hall, are you ready?
We're going to lend him some glasses.
Oh, he's going to get some glasses. Okay.
He's pretty big.
Okay. Now, I asked you before the show if you'd seen the hot seat.
Raymond, you look good.
Those are great. Those are going on stage. Those are going on stage.
You're rocketed, baby.
Some blenders.
You are rocketed.
Okay. So the hot seat's a rapid fire cross-examination where all three of us are going to ask you questions. You give short answers, preferably yes or no, one word answers. Your goal is to answer as many questions in the fewest words as fast as you can.
Okay.
So I'm going to swear you in. Raise your right hand. State your full name for the record.
Raymond McDonald.
Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to answer as many questions as fast as you can with the fewest words?
I do.
Okay, he's ready.
He's ready.
All right, here we go. We're on the timer. How do you spell McDonald?
M C D O N A L D.
Are you related to Ronald McDonald?
Not at all.
What about Norm McDonald?
Not at all.
Is old, old McDonald, Old McDonald the farmer, your grandpa?
Not at all.
Isn't it true you're running for reelection?
That is true.
We made you a campaign window sticker for the back of your truck. It's all capital letters, white calligraphy script. It says Ray Mundo. Do you have time to install it after the show?
It goes to Estima Chezimo.
Bueno!
Yeah, all right. Are you an Aggie?
Yes, I am.
All right. What is your, what is your logo saying at Texas A and M?
My, my wife.
Why does your logo say T A T M?
Why does your logo say ATM?
Because it's Texas A and M.
That doesn't make sense.
It's just got them on the other side.
What's the first three words of the Aggie wore him?
Oh, my gosh. Holabalu connect, connect.
What does that mean?
It doesn't mean anything.
And yet you say it.
We do it many times. Yes.
So it's true that you have eleven kids.
That is true.
And who's your favorite?
My favorite one right now would be probably Walter. He's the youngest.
I love you. See, I did favorites. I play favorites too.
Okay, what about your favorite cousin?
Oh, my goodness. My favorite cousin is Nelda.
Attaboy. Only one answer there. Have you ever received a permanent?
Yes.
You have? Okay. When was the last time?
That would have been in the eighties, of course.
What kind of hair product do you use?
I use Tresemme.
Have you ever rocked a city councilman stash, a little penciler?
Oh, no, 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 not at all.
Never?
A street, city street sweeper?
No, I don't. My wife, well, actually I tried. My wife had it shaved off quick.
I like the way you look. How tall are you?
I'm five eleven.
Do you wear short shorts to the gym?
No, I don't go to the gym.
Oh, okay.
Well, how much do you binge?
I don't know. I don't binge. I don't binge. Nothing.
Isn't it true you wear glasses just for style?
No, that's not true.
What's your eyesight?
Bad.
Do you have any other handicaps?
Yes. No.
This Halloween, will you go as Frank Underwood from the House of Cards?
I would if you told me to.
How about a more ethical version like Kevin Spacey?
Yes. I don't do Kevin Spacey anymore.
Do you have a will?
No.
A prenup?
No.
How much money will it take for you to retire?
About twenty bucks.
What's the most humble job you've ever had?
Cleaning toilets.
How often you check social media?
I have to every day.
What apps do you use?
Generally Facebook.
Do you do posting, commenting, or just browsing?
Both. Three. All three.
Have you cried in the last year?
Yeah, I cried yesterday.
Oh, wow.
You killed it. You killed it. Yay.
Sum up your life philosophy in a word or phrase.
We're all just thumping on a free watermelon.
Hey. Billy Joe Shaver gave me that one stuff. What's the, what's the one thing that people don't know about you that you want them to know?
That I got a really good heart. That's what the doctor said to me yesterday during my physical.
How long did you work at a temp agency before you became a professional?
I worked at a temp agency for, I think, probably three years.
When do you expect to receive a full-time offer?
They offered me, they offered me a full-time offer back when I was a coffee boy and I refused to take it. But now we've ended up with this.
Okay. You're also a pop icon, a Christian blues singer. Tell us your band name again.
It is Honorable Reverend Sleepy Ray and the Mighty Blood.
How many of your stage outfits are stained with blood?
Not blood. I don't have any blood on any of them.
Unleashed.
Unleashed.
How many songs have you sung?
Sung?
Sung.
A thousand.
Sing us a chorus or two.
Of what?
Or at least just a line. Sing us a line.
I couldn't marry my honey.
So you're a pastor at Vineyard Church in Conroe, correct?
Yeah.
Do you use real wine for communion?
No, we are not allowed to.
So if you did, would you use Camus or Silver Oak?
Camus.
What's the best kept secret at the church amongst the clergymen? What do you guys talk about in the rectory?
I think all our secrets are out in the open. We give them out on Sunday. That's the, that's why it's killing us.
Follow-up question. Have you ever found money in the wall of the bathroom?
I was at the wrong church for that.
Yeah, he bashed all the walls out last week.
I did find a Chinese coin in the back once. That's it.
Oh, man. Who at the mayor's office spends the most time in the mirror?
Oh, that would, that'd probably be Jody.
How about the least?
That would probably be Todd.
How do you, how do you pronounce your boss's name?
Jody Chakoski.
And how long has she been mayor?
He went through that a lot. Yes. He's been mayor, he's been mayor two years almost.
Jody's a him. Okay. Assuming you're the top dog, who's the second best temp worker?
Oh, there, I would say the second best temp worker there. If I was the top dog, I guess that when Jody was gone, so I'll go with Kurt Maddox and then Todd can beat me up later.
Okay. Top blues singer, who's the second best?
Top blues singer, Muddy Waters, second best, Lightning Hopkins.
Okay. You're the best televangelist. Who's the second best?
Oh, it's got to be Joel Steen.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
What's the meanest thing you said to a city council attendee heckler?
That, I think I said, that's not true. That was not very good.
If you could be anything other than a professional temporary worker, what would
that be?
Uh, probably a pastor. No, I don't know, a barista at Starbucks.
Okay, nice, one food for life. One food for life, what would you eat?
Uh, I like asparagus.
What's the fastest you've ever gone in a car?
A hundred and forty.
Favorite movie or show?
Uh, So I Married an Ex-Murderer.
Favorite place you've ever been?
Um, Switzerland.
House District 14, I mean, House District 15 race, Steve Toth or Maris Blair?
He ready.
All right, he ready.
Toth for taxes, who's smarter, you or Jody?
Sorry about that, Steve, that's my cousin, so I got to do that.
Who's smarter, you or Jody?
Jody's much smarter than me.
You or Nelda?
Nelda's much smarter than everyone.
Hundred-yard dash, you versus your highest tithing parishioner, how big is the check after you throw the race?
Uh, well, it's, that's going to be my brother, by the way, who is a fantastic runner,